All right, 6:45. We're going to call the joint meeting to order, and I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, flag to my left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great and positive progress in this one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
All right, item number one on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from June 13, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
Any amendments, changes, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is the consent calendar. We have items A through O. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pull item 2B from the consent calendar.
2B, okay. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar A and then C through O.
So moved.
I'll give that one to Jackie. Sorry, I think she just beat you. And then Andrew jumped on the second, so we got a motion on the second. Any comments, questions on those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Sebastian, why don't you bring 2B to the table?
Motion to bring 2B to the table.
All right, can I have a second?
Second.
Great, Sebastian, let us know what you'd like to speak about.
Just looking for further clarification, we have $1.3 million there from the coronavirus relief recovery fund. Is this just replacing funds from one fund to another? Or?
Very good question, Diane. You can come up and make sure that I get it 100% correct. But this is funds, so we put $2 million into the Building Bristol Grant Program for those that didn't qualify for the first round, and these were improvements that they can make to their businesses or nonprofits, and it was matching funds. So we put $2 million in originally because that's how much we figured could have been allocated. Unfortunately, many of the businesses didn't choose to go after those funds, or they didn't have the matching funds, or things fell apart. So the $1.3 million is the amount of money right now that we are taking from the Building Bristol Grant Program and putting back into our kind of general fund, I'll call it, for the ARPA.
Well, it's the ARPA money.
The ARPA money, right.
Right, so it's going back into the coronavirus fund, and it actually has already been appropriated for other city projects.
Okay. And that's outside of the Building Bristol realm?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Unfortunately, it's not new money, it's not.
Right.
It's all part of that original ARPA allocation and grant.
Okay.
But good question. We're just kind of balancing the books right now as we move along in the process.
Any other questions or comments from anybody else? Marie?
Because we are on the topic, then, that money needs to be spent when and how is it restricted in terms of its purpose?
It needs to be obligated by December 2024, which means we, the city, would have to make sure that we have it obligated or distributed for some purpose. It needs to be actually spent by December of 2026. So mostly for COVID relief, or there's a whole list of what it was for. Anything to help businesses get back on track from COVID that were financially impacted. I know a lot of city projects we're using it for, a lot of parks projects, some infrastructure projects, the garage across the street, we use some of it for the garage behind City Hall.
And does that include nonprofits as well as for-profit?
Yes.
Enterprises? Thank you.
And just to add, most of the nonprofits were part of our first round, and we, most of those are really moving along. There's very few that are not in progress. A lot of these Building Bristol Grants, which started a little bit later, are in process currently, but they got started later. And one other quick thing just to add, and we just talked about this today, so it's good for everybody to hear this, that we are asking as the ARPA task force to make sure that anybody that has asked for funds and it's been approved, that they need to start spending this money before January of 2024, because we don't want to be at risk for losing any of this money.
Thank you.
All right. I think we've entertained all questions. Everybody good, ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A motion carries. Now I gotta go back to do, sorry, this gets harder to read. Number three is to make transfers totaling $915,425 within the general fund as of July 1, 2023 for contract settlements. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A motion carries. And then number four is to make an additional appropriation totaling $11,350 within the transfer station fund for local 1338 contract settlement.
So moved.
Second.
I got Sebastian's a second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And number five, monthly revenue and expense report. Diane, you're up.
Hello again. This will be quick. We're actually in the process of finalizing everything for June 30, which ended a couple weeks ago. We, just to give you a high level, current tax revenues, and actually, I was happy to see the tax collector finalized her report, and she actually was right in line with what we had in our system, because her collector's report is a little bit different for audit purposes than what we currently have. But her current collections were at 100%, and we had 99.9, but I know there were some things that we had not yet posted. Her prior collections came in at 117.6% of the budget, and her motor vehicle supplements came in at 125.3, and interest in liens 124.4%. So all of that was over what we had estimated when we set the budget. As you know, our building permit and our conveyance fees have been doing very well, as well as our investment income. And then our police special services, there will be a surplus there. I just quickly went through and just added up where we were with revenues, and just with excess revenues for the fiscal year, we're about a little over $5 million in excess revenues of what we had estimated. So that's very good news, because that will give us opportunity to carry over funds and reserve them going forward in our mill rate stabilization reserve fund and for other capital purposes. On the expenditure side, just a few things to note. I think, for the most part, all of the departments will be able to balance within their own departments. The only exception would be if there were any that had some commodities, utilities and fuel, but we did have a reserve for that, so I'm not too concerned about that. We have about $576,000 that we haven't touched yet for that to offset that. And we did meet with the Board of Ed earlier today, and I know that their utilities and fuel also will need some help. And when we have those numbers, we can use some of that to help offset that for them. And I think that was the plan when we did set that money aside last year when we were setting the budget. On the expenditure side, we still have about $800,000 left in contingency, which is good. And we will be finalizing, all departments have to have everything into us as far as invoices by the end of this week. So the auditors will be here the end of the month. We actually have a meeting with them tomorrow to finalize planning. They'll be here for a week the end of the month, and then they will be back in October. Just one other thing just to note, we did do an RFP for banking services, so the Banking and Audit Committee of the Board of Finance will be also working on that as well. So that's something that is in process, and we received eight proposals that we'll be looking at. Any questions on anything?
Through the chair, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Given it's year-end, you know, it's a sizable, it was a ton of line items. From your perspective, from a dollar perspective, what are two areas that are a plus to say, you know what, we killed it, we did a lot better, and two areas that you would say are negatives that, as we think about from a risk management perspective, these are areas where we thought, you know, X, and we missed the buy this much, and this is what we kind of?
Do you mean as far as revenue estimates and expenditure estimates?
Yeah, so just an example, say it's, you know, workers' comp, say we thought we'd have $1 million, and we spent $4 million, you know, so we missed by $3 million. So from a line item, you know, I forgot how many pages are. Are there two pluses, two minuses from your perspective as we are year-end?
Good question. On the workers' comp and the health insurance, I won't have those final numbers yet until we get the final numbers from Cigna, and Lockton has had a chance to go through the IBNR numbers. So once we have that information, we'll know where our health insurance reserve fund and the workers' comp fund. Those expenditures don't run through the general fund. We budget a certain amount and transfer it to that fund, so that's a little bit separate from here. So I will have better information on that as we get further into the audit. As far, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just, as an example, it could be dog catcher, you know, the dog catcher, you know, went over.
(laughter)
So.
Sorry. I don't think we need to shut on camera.
Or just, conveyance, it's just something from your perspective, two pluses, they we killed it.
So two pluses, I mean, as far as like revenues, we did very well in investment income, we did very well in our conveyance fees and our building permit fees. On the expenditure side, and as far as revenues, there were no significant areas on revenues that far exceeded what we thought. In fact, it was the opposite, everything far exceeded on the plus side. On the expenditure side, like I said, the biggest area right now is just in the commodities. There was nothing else on the expenditure side. Everybody pretty much stayed within budget. And as far as contractual settlements, we did set money aside for contractual negotiations, and right now we have about $168,000 left in that, but there was one contract that was not settled for June 30. So, I mean, other than that, that's the only, everything was really very positive on the city side. Board of Ed's side will know further within the next couple of weeks where they end up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Diane, thank you. I'm just curious on the RFP for banking services. Are you looking at this for a reason for operational purposes of fee reduction, or are you looking at, you know, where the savings are going to be banked and the rates are all combined?
So this is operational, so it's not for the investments. Investments are done pretty much on an ongoing basis, you know, getting CD rates or Treasury rates and so forth. This is more for operational. We were with People's Bank, well, it was Farmington, then People's, now M&amp;T, and we did extend the contract with M&amp;T.
Say no more, I can understand fully.
So, yeah, so that's where we are. And, you know, it did cover a lot of services. We did include lockbox and credit card fees, but I think some of that we probably may keep where they are, but we wanted to take a look at it anyway.
Okay. And what do those RFPs do?
Actually, they came in last week. We have eight already.
Wonderful.
That we'll be looking at, yep.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't think we have any other questions. Anything from Zoom? Nope, hearing none. I don't think there's any other business to come before us, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. If I can get your attention, please, we're going to get the meeting started. And so it is now, I'm already two minutes behind, I apologize. We were close to starting right on time. This is still way ahead of where we're at.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome, everybody, to the city council meeting for July 11, 2023. We're going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great and positive progress in this one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
All right, for opening ceremonies tonight, I have kind of a fun surprise for a lot of people, but I think a really nice story. So I'm going to ask Josh Maderos to come up to the microphone. Josh is our Director of Parks, Recreation, Youth and Community Services, superintendent, actually, and he's going to tell you a little story here and introduce some people, and then we're going to give out some awards.
Testing.
There you go.
All right, good evening. Thank you all for inviting me. My name is Josh Maderos. I'm the Superintendent of Parks, Recreation, Youth and Community Services. Really excited to be here. Summer, as you all know, is our busiest season. The parks are packed, or the pools are packed. We run hundreds of programs for thousands of Bristol kids throughout the year. One of our largest programs is our summer camp series, which is located at a couple different locations across the city. We employ hundreds of staff each year to deliver these services. The week before all of our programs start, we offer an extensive summer training orientation program that includes everything from CPR, first aid, how to work with different campers, diversity, et cetera. All of this goes into that week, over 40 hours of training. The very first week that camp started, I think it was the second or third day, one of our staff had a choking incident. She couldn't breathe. One of our newly trained staff members came in, performed abdominal thrust, and saved our staff member. It was a very intense, quick, and stressful process, but it really spoke to the power of the training that we offer and some of the really incredible people that work in our department. Tonight, I want to honor Jalen, who is going to come up at this time.[930.13][930.13](applause). I'd also like to invite, before we talk to Jalen, I'm going to invite our camp nurse, Mary, to come forward. I don't want to say she's our victim.[945.01][945.01](laughter). Mary's going to say a couple of brief remarks about her experience, and I think we'd love to hear it.
Can you all hear me? I'm not a really good public speaker, but I'm going to try not to cry. I just wanted to say, a special thank you again to JB for saving my life. It was the scariest moment I ever experienced. I was trying to be healthy eating quinoa. Never again.[976.86][976.86](laughter) Never, never again. I guess I inhaled some of the quinoa, and we were all eating lunch together, campers and staff alike, and, as you know, when you're choking, you're coughing, and I was wheezing and coughing, so I was getting enough air to cough. And then at one point, I couldn't cough, and I couldn't breathe, and I panicked, and I looked at JB, I think I threw myself at JB. I looked at JB, and signal I was choking, and he was so calm and cool and collected and just, he did what he had to do, and he did the Heimlich flawlessly, and he saved, he saved my life. After I got myself together, I mean, it's a freaky experience, it's so scary. I didn't know what to do, and the adrenaline's running, and I'm coughing, I get myself together. I'm like, JB, you just saved my life. I'm like, do I pay off your card? Do you like Starbucks? I don't know what to do. What do we do?[1030.23][1030.23](laughter) I'm just so grateful, I'm so grateful. I would like to say that Parks and Rec has an outstanding training program for these staff members. I'm just so grateful. I've been a camp nurse for over 20 years, and I've never seen anything so wonderful, and I believe it was because of that training that JB was able to take control of that situation and save my life, and I'm so grateful. It could have ended that day, and I just still can't believe it. He was a hero that day, he'll always be a hero in my life, and I'm so grateful.
Thank you.[1069.23][1069.23](applause). A great story.
This time, I'd like to introduce the hero of the hour, Jalen.[1081.23][1081.23](applause).
Thanks to my fan club that showed up tonight. I don't really have anything prepared, so I guess I'd just like to start off by saying thank you to, you know, the Parks and Rec CPR and first aid trainers, because without them, I wouldn't be able to, you know, have the skills and the confidence to, you know, go and do something like that and handle that situation. So I guess the one thing, you know, I really took out of it was that I think everybody should get CPR and first aid trained, because, I mean, God forbid it ever happens, but it doesn't hurt to be prepared. So I'm just glad I could be there for Mary, and go Parks and Rec.[1131.01][1131.01](laughter).
Stay right there, Jalen.
So at this time, on behalf of the mayor of the city of Bristol, we're going to present Jalen with the All Heart Award. We're going to do it up front here, so if you want to start moving here, we'll have family, friends, a lot of our camp staff came out to support Jalen. If you guys want to start shifting over, you can take photos, and then we're going to have family and everybody else come up for photos, too. So feel free to shift over.
And while you guys are setting up, I'll just read the All Heart Award. Seems a little inappropriate for me to hand you a piece of paper and a certificate for what you did, and Mary said it much better than I ever will, but in recognition of your quick action, utilizing your first aid skills and performing abdominal thrust to assist the camp nurse, we appreciate you, and we're going to give you this All Heart Award, Jalen.[1183.01][1183.01](applause). All righty, great way to start a meeting. Let's move on to agenda item number two, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from our city council meeting on June 13.
So moved.
Second.
Amendments, changes, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three on the agenda is public participation. I have a couple names here, we'll go, yeah, I'll explain to you, we'll wait one second, but for those that are here that signed up, we'll go there first. If there's anybody on Zoom, is there anybody on Zoom? I didn't check for this meeting. We'll go to you second.
Oh, yeah, there is.
And for those that are speaking, we ask that you keep to a three-minute time limit and state your name and address for the record. And up first, we have Stacy Roburge.
Stacy Roburge, 61, Peppermint Lane, Bristol. So if you've been listening, you'll know there's been quite a lot of chatter about the reassessment and the increase in our home property taxes, which I believe averages out to about 22% per homeowner. Apparently, there were options as to how to roll out this process. State law allows for a phased-in revaluation approach, like Stanford and New Haven did, who voted to phase in the increase over two years. Doing that would have eased the immediate burden on everyone. Instead, you chose the option that basically hits us all at once, and then used the lower mill rate as a consolation prize. Not buying it. My taxes went up almost $500, so the low mill rate means nothing. I'm also concerned about why you never saw public comment on how either option would have worked out for the Bristol taxpayers and why the phased-in approach wasn't chosen. Some of your previous comments seem to indicate that the phase in wasn't presented to us, when in fact, it seems that you simply missed the deadline to request it from the state. That's disturbing, to say the least. My suggestion moving forward is this: You need to sharpen some pencils and get to work lowering costs of doing business and bringing in new revenue for future budgets, instead of resting on the hard work of the previous administration, who are the ones responsible for all the hard work currently happening in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.[1355.83][1355.83](applause). Next, next on the list is Mel B.
Mel B., 820 Stafford Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut. I'm here tonight to ask the mayor and city council to be more respectful of the taxpayers and not attempt to sell us a bill of goods about the mill rate decreasing the lowest in 10 years, and avoid the fact that taxes went up considerably despite the mill rate decrease. So here's a little history I found interesting. In 1976, the mill rate was 75.70. Then, in the booming '80s, when there was a ton of economic development, including Otis, Covanta, and other factories being built, the mill rate ranged from 44.95 in 1980 up to 51.56 in 1987, and then 1988 was a revival year and it dropped to 19.95 mills. In the '90s, ESPN had huge expansion, and the mill rate stayed at 26.50 for five years due to grand list growth. So my point is here is that the mill rate is just a number. What's really a concern to the taxpayers is the percentage of a tax increase people are seeing and having to pay. Even without reevaluation, the Board of Finance noted that taxes were going up 2%, so don't hide behind one number and try to tell us that that's the one that matters when it's the other number that's coming out of people's pockets. We aren't stupid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.[1449.51][1449.51](applause). And Joan Pelkey? Pelkey, sorry.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Loud and clear?
I can hear you.
Oh, good.
And just your address for the record?
My name is Joan Pelkey.
There you go.
My address is 353 Perkin Street, Bristol. Good evening. My name is Joan Pelkey, and I reside at 353 Perkin Street, a house that we built in 1990. We love our home, our neighborhood, and we both volunteer in our community. This year, our taxes increased by $558 and change. It may not seem much like much, but it is to us. I'm not someone who complains, but when I opened the tax bill, I was a little angry. My taxes increased, but we will hopefully be able to take advantage of the senior volunteer tax credit, which I never did, but now I have to. But what really made me angry was remembering how the mayor and many of you campaigned on taxes, high salaries, and fiscal responsibility. You even had a tax rally with a bullhorn. Two years later, you announced that a recent contract negotiation has our police at the top of the salary range statewide. Good for them, they deserve it, they do, every penny of it. Two years ago, you also said department head salaries were excessive, and you put the Parks and Recreation director's salary on one of your campaign mailers. The same one you just reappointed for another four years. And that, you all say, is doing wonderful things, and he is. That's right, he's doing wonderful things. You know why? You get what you pay for, and Bristol deserves nice parks. Two years later, I'm looking for an additional $500 while I'm on a fixed income and ongoing medical and healthcare costs. While you try to convince us that lowering the mill rate is helping us, it's not. You didn't lower it enough to prevent a tax increase on most houses. I've talked to my family, my friends, and some of them saw increases greater than mine. My point in here, coming here tonight, is to let you know, I am looking for elected officials to make decisions and stand by them and not try to whitewash them. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. I think that's all we have here. And Joanne, just for you directly, while you are at the assessor's office signing up for your senior volunteer tax credit, there is a senior homeowner tax credit that happens to be $500 this year. We raised that from $125 to $500 because we knew that the mill rate change might negatively affect them.
They said that didn't start yet.
You can apply now through February 2024, so I would encourage you to go back to the assessor's office and check with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here want to add comments? How about on Zoom? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to address the council? All right, hearing none, we'll move to number four, which is announcements. I'm going to start on my far left tonight. Sebastian, do you have any announcements?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. From the Friends of the Bristol Public Library, we've, the Friends have just announced the author-speaker luncheon, guest author for this year, and that is New York Times number one bestselling author Lisa Scottline, and she will be at the Doubletree by Hilton at 11:30 a.m., when doors open on October 19 of this year. Tickets include a plated lunch, author presentation, and a copy of the author's novel, Loyalty, followed by a book signing, and a cash bar is available. Ticket price is $35, and the tickets go on sale of the 24th of this month at the Bristol Public Library, and a mail-in form is available at bristollib.com. And again, that's brought to us by the Friends of the Public Library. Last year's author luncheon was very successful, lots of people at the Doubletree, so we're hoping for a similar turnout this year with a very popular author. So good news from the Friends.
Thank you, Sebastian. Susan, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind everyone about the Rockwell Park Summer Festival, which is on Saturday, August 19. It runs from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. It's held down at Rockwell Park. Last year, for all who attended and who did not, attendance was phenomenal, even though it was a really hot day, they had phenomenal attendance. So this year, again, live music all day, food, craft vendors, car show, artists, kid zones, and just mark it on your calendar. It's going to be another great event.
Thank you, Susan. Jackie, any comment, any announcements for you?
I do, Mayor, one. To raise public awareness of our disabled community, the Committee for Persons with Disabilities will be setting up a booth at the farmer's market this Saturday, as well as August 5 and as well as August 5th and September 9th. So I hope that you will stop by.
Thanks, Jackie. Eric?
I just want to remind everybody that rocking out at Rockwell Summer Concert Series is still going strong. I was fortunate enough to get there early today, before I got here to listen to a little bit. 6:30 to 8:30 until August 15th every Tuesday.
Thank you. Andrew?
With summer in full swing, the pools at both parks are open seven days a week, and they're open from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. Due to, if there's inclement weather, they, for every thunder, there's 20 minutes added on for every thunderclap that you have to get out of the pool. The fees for the outdoor pools are $2 for residents, 18 to 59, and $8 for non-residents. Children, 0 to 17, it's $1 for residents, $4 for non-residents. Seniors and college have the fee of $1.50 for a resident and $6 even for non-residents. The splash pads at Rockwell Page and Stox Playground are free of charge. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Andrew. Cheryl, any announcements?
I have two, and I was out saying for council, committee reports. But I just want to remind people that your dog license renewals were due in June, and a lot of people approached me thinking it was July. So if you haven't done that yet, please do so, which is great because on October, excuse me, August 21st is the pool plunge, you know, through the park system. So your dog does have to be licensed to go to the pool plunge. But please get those in. And then I just want to mention that the Boys and Girls Club will be having a color run on September 9th at 10:00 a.m., and more information can be found on their Facebook page or their website. It's a great opportunity for your kids to get, you know, colored with all sorts of dyes and things like that. They love it, and it benefits the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Thanks. And I just have one announcement that I'm very proud of. You know, long time coming, and most of you have probably already seen a lot of the work being done already. But the bike carrier project, the Center Square groundbreaking, will be July 13th coming up very soon. And very excited about that project because that holds two new factors in our downtown development, the live and play. So they have 104 apartments that they're going to build, two four-story buildings above, four dedicated restaurant spaces down below. So very exciting. That's on July 13th, and there's information on the mayor's page about that. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any other announcements? All right, we will move to the consent calendar, which is A through H. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar then.
Motion to approve.
I'll give it to Eric Rosengren, second to you, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to number five, which is reports and committee reports. 6A is the Real Estate Committee, and I'll let you go ahead and introduce that, Susan.
Okay, this one, I have a motion. I hereby move that the following property be referred to the Planning Commission for a Connecticut General Statute 8-24 report at the request of the Park and Recreation and Youth and Community Department for the Page Park Revitalization Plan, MAP 37, Lot 134, and Lot 135, King Street. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Anything else you want to add on this, Sue? I think they're straightforward, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, first of all, any questions? All right. I got to give you a chance. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're not trying to break the record tonight, so we don't have to go too fast. All right, 6B, which is another real estate.
I'll read the motion first. I hereby move to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to renew a lease agreement with Bristol Hospital, Inc. and/or its assigns for the benefit of the Bristol Women Infant Child WIC program for city-owned property located at 11 Bellevue Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut, for a term of one year commencing on or about July 17th, 2023, through on or about July 17th, 2024, with a 4% increase in rent. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $1,622.40 per month, for a total of $19,468.80 per year. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council's office to effectuate the same.
Second.
All right, and this is one...
This was just a renewal of a lease. We've done this in last year as well, and the Real Estate Committee worked really hard and took a look at, you know, the cost of increased fuel costs and utilities because this particular tenant, we cover those costs as part of the rent. So we came up with the 4% rent increase.
Great. Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. And 6C, also real estate.
Okay. I hereby move that the City of Bristol approve the abatement of all real estate taxes on the following properties owned by David Pallaya, Lot 98-1 Frederick Street, Lot 3 Broad Street, and Lot 96 Twining Street. These lots will be donated to the City of Bristol by Mr. Pallaya sometime in July of 2023.
Second.
Great, and they're giving us this, so we're not going to charge them taxes on that. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. D is Ordnance Committee, so that's you as well, Susan.
Okay, we have two different motions. Actually, can I do the motion to waive the reading on both of them at the same time? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading. In accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances be introduced on this, to this date pertaining to Section 4... Sec... I'm sorry. Let me start again. Chapter 4, Section 4-3, Dash 3, pickup and disposal of dog waste, fine be waived. And also pertaining to Chapter 10, Article 3, litter in public and private places be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries. Why don't you bring D to the...
Okay. Okay. So the first motion I have is in accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances be hereby introduced. I further move that the time and place of Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at 4:50 p.m. in Meeting Room 2, Police Complex Center, 131 Main Street, 2nd Floor, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordnance Committee, and the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Second.
Great. Anything else you want to add at this point? We have the public hearing coming up anyway, but...
And both of these kind of correspond. The Ordnance Committee has been working for several months on creating and cleaning up and pulling together different pieces of our ordinances pertaining to littering. And because we're kind of pulling it together and making a really awesome ordinance on littering, there was a section pertaining to dog waste that we have to also change in a different section. So that's why we have two different public hearings. But this is all related to the ordinance on littering.
Great. Any questions or...
Through the chair, just to clarify, it might sound to some people like we're waiving the fee for dog waste, and it's not. It's going to be incorporated in the other ordinance. So I just want to make sure that people understand that.
We're actually increasing the fine for dog waste if you don't pick up after your animals.
All right.
Okay, so that's... Do we have to vote on that one?
We do have to vote on that. So any other comments or questions on D? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Let's bring E forward.
Okay. In accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at 4:50 p.m. in Meeting Room 2, Police Complex Center, 131 North Main... I'm sorry, Main Street, 2nd Floor, Bristol, Connecticut, will be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordnance Committee, and the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Second.
Great. I think we're good.
This is the actual littering ordinance itself.
So this is a lot of the new stuff as well. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll stay with you, Susan. Do you have any other committee reports?
Yes, I have. Okay, so with code, code enforcement, we have a few numbers for this month. Again, we had to have our code enforcement meeting rescheduled due to the holiday from last week. So we actually had our code enforcement meeting this morning. It was a special meeting, so we couldn't add any new properties to it, but it was still a full calendar that we worked our way through. Some numbers, for the month of June, we had 30 new code enforcement complaints, 30 violation letters, two condemned properties. Two properties that are hoarding-type properties were also addressed by the code enforcement team. Tall grass complaints, which are very common this time of year, we had 21. That was down 3 by last month. Total number of fines that the building department issued for... There was only four citations that came out of building, but that amount was $2,592. And the amount that we actually collected was $1,944. And out of Public Works came $6,984 worth of fines, of which $4,860 was actually collected. So I think the code enforcement team is working in high gear. There's a lot of activity, and they're really starting to clear up some of these properties and cases.
Yep, I would agree. We're unfortunately still have a long list, but it is getting smaller, and they're moving people forward, and we're cleaning up properties. Excellent. Any other committee reports for you?
No. As far as the police commission, I just, I do want to just like say that we were really happy to hear that Deputy Chief Matt Moskowitz did report down to Quantico this past Saturday to start 10 weeks down at the National FBI Academy, which is a great honor. And I just give Chief Gould kudos because not only is he a graduate, but Mark Morello, our other deputy chief, actually just graduated Quantico. And now Matt is down there. And this is a high honor, and it is something that police administrators really value, to be able to say that they attended and graduated.
Agreed. And I don't think there's any that could say that both deputy chiefs might have gone through a program like that in the state of Connecticut.
I don't think that there's a department in the state of Connecticut who can say that their top upper command staff have all, at least coming from the same department,
Right.
have all been to Quantico.
So we have four total that have been to Quantico? Three, I believe, right? So Chief Gould and the two deputy chiefs. Okay, the deputy, okay. Yep, excellent. Anything else? No? Good. Jackie, I'm going to go to you. Oh, I forgot, Sebastian. Let me go to Sebastian, so I don't forget. Sebastian, any committee reports?
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to bring to light the work that the Firehouse Building 3 Committee has done and share all the info with where we're at right now with the council and the public so that everyone's on the same page, since we've been meeting for about eight months now. We selected an architect to work with through the RFQ process not too long ago, and Silver Pretzelseli and Associates. And we've gone through the programming phase of planning out the inner workings of the facility, the firehouse in the Forestville area, and creating options as far as it refers to programming and working with the fire department personnel, Chief Hart, on what works best for the fire department. Our budget, as approved through the 10-year capital improvement and strategic planning commission, was around $6.2 million, and that's around $545 a square foot. Working with Chris Nardi with Silver and Pretzelseli, we're seeing bids come back in the current market at around $6.50 per square foot. So that works out to be about a $9.2 million project. So we're giving ourselves a couple of options here as far as the planning goes. We're going back. We're working with the FD on programming once again to work out appropriate plans for $6.2. And if funding comes through from the state, which we're hoping for in the fall potentially, $9.2. So that would be, if needed, to get to the firehouse to around 9,000 square feet as opposed to just over 11,000. But like I said, most importantly, meeting the needs of the fire department. And I want to thank our state-level representation. I know Mary Fortier, Representative Mary Fortier, State Senator Henry Martin, Representative Kara Pavlock-Damato, Representative Joe Hawkes have all been in communication at the state level and with our commission as far as what our needs are. So I want to thank them for really representing us there. And I want to thank Roger Russo also, who's worked with us, Sean Moore, our chair, and Chief Hart once again. And this committee meets the fourth Wednesday of the month at 6:00 p.m. in the small meeting room across from the Meeting Room 1 in City Hall West. So it's a busy municipal calendar during the month, so we had to place this meeting toward the end of the month, at the fourth Wednesday. They're open to the public, so everyone's invited to come. And we want to be transparent about the process of putting together these plans for the firehouse, since it's going to be a new facility there at Forestville. And we want folks to know how we're working on it and what we're doing. But right now, we're moving along pretty well. We're preparing so that we meet the needs of the fire department, and hopefully, we can, we can work through it with the state. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that update. That's it for you, right, Sebastian?
That's it, yeah.
Jackie?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have any committee reports.
No, that's okay. Eric?
I just have something quick from the housing. There were some concerns about lights, making sure the lights were on, the streetlights were working. There was a couple of double pole issues. Come to find out, I went down, I took pictures of poles and lights, working with Dave Hartley. There was wrong pole numbers on those poles. So that was corrected. We expedited the double pole to be removed and the repair to all the lights, or the lights are in works now with proper pole numbers, so that they know which poles are which. Lights and cameras are being worked on in all the properties to ensure better safety to the people that live there. Some infrastructure is already there in these buildings and in these properties, but what is it? Bonnie Acres has zero infrastructure at this point, so it will be the last project.
Thanks. Thanks to Ombudsman Hartley. He is on it. It was probably the best appointment I've ever made. That's a whole other story. Andrew?
I have one, Mayor, from the School Readiness Council. I know I had brought up last week about the two winners. I don't want to butcher her name, Eliana Laura and August Pearson, who attend Stafford and Hubble. But the one thing that jumped out at me was there were 390 students enrolled in kindergarten. We don't meet, the SRC does not meet in the summer, but they did have to cancel their Family Fun Day at Eastern due to weather. But I'm glad to announce that is now being, a new date has been finalized from 11 to 3 on August 5th at Bristol Eastern High School. Again, it's free for families. There will be a touch of truck, a helicopter landing, many local vendors, fun activities, and young children, food trucks, and much more.
Thanks. How about you, Cheryl?
Thank you, Mayor. Two committees I'd like to report on. One is, at our next Public Works meeting, which is on Thursday, July 20th, we will again be working on the fees at the transfer station. Letters had gone out to many of the commercial accounts, letting them know some, you know, ranges of fees and so forth, and have been invited to come to the meeting. So we encourage feedback. Again, we want to make sure that the transfer station is well-used, but that residents aren't shouldering the burden of commercial accounts. And so we're aiming for fairness in the pricing structure. The City Arts and Culture Commission, we've got some shows coming to Rockwell Theater. We've been asked, and I have to tell you, Ariana Terrio, who's the theater manager, has hit the ground running. She's delightful, but she has worked. And so put these in your calendar, and these are confirmed shows. On September 9th, the Queen Tribute Band will be coming to Rockwell Theater. On November 18th, the Billy Joel Experience... On November eighteenth, the Billy Joel Experience, and on December sixteenth, John Beardsley, and I understand he's an Elvis impersonator, thank you very much. The showtimes are seven to nine PM, and along with this, we're trying to put together a volunteer program for ushers and so forth. So there's an opportunity for members of the public to participate and help and volunteer and maybe earn some swag, some brag swag about Rockwell Theater. So have those dates, and, where's Josh? I heard, this is not confirmed, so, but on October twenty-eighth, we may have a viewing of the Rocky Horror Picture Show.
Ooh, that would be fun.
Mark these dates in your calendar. It's time to get down to the Rockwell Theater. This is what we've been working towards, and I'm so happy to be able to share this. So one, one plug for the City Arts and Culture Commission, we do have room for another commissioner. So if you have somebody whose interest, the commission is kind of looking, would like somebody who has some fundraising experience, that's a personal request I wanted to share. But if you've got, you know, a desire to see the arts grow, and you have some, you know, to add, and everybody does, please get your resume into the mayor. We'd like to be a full commission. Thank you.
Thanks. The only other thing I do have to add is John Beardsley is a Bristol resident and has lived in Nashville for, I don't know, thirty years now, and is recognized as one of the top Elvis impersonators in the world. So that's an exciting one, and I know he came back to Bristol recently and they got that done, so very good. All of them are great, but go ahead.
Also, the Veterans Day event will be held back at the Boulevard for the first time in many, many years, so that's another one-
Yep.
...being held on Veterans Day.
And we're also looking to honor our Vietnam veterans at Memorial Boulevard, and I think the date right now, it is August twenty-third, so a lot of things coming. We all have been pushing for that because we know it's a spur to economic and community development, so kudos to the Arts and Culture Commission. Anything else? All right, we are on number seven, which is old business, and Sebastian, I think you have an old business item.
Yes, I do, in regards to the services contract for the monument in the West Cemetery. I'd like to make a motion, I move that the city enter into professional services agreement with Shaw and Staub Enterprises of Berlin, Connecticut, for the restoration of the West Cemetery Civil War Monument in the sum of thirty-three thousand dollars, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the agreement subject to review and approval by the Corporation Council.
Second.
And a second? The only thing I'll add to this, just to remind everybody, is the Board of Finance approved this already, and this all went through a process, but the Board of Finance had put on a clause kind of in their motion that they wanted to make sure that the contract was reviewed by legal counsel, and we did our due diligence, so that has now happened, and that's why the motion's coming forward tonight. But this is something that we generally really are, have already approved, just now we have the legal oversight on it. Anything else to add, Sebastian?
Anything else to add?
Great. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, under new business, I think we do want to bring one thing forward.
We do. We have an item that was not able to-
A new, a giant, just, a motion to bring a new agenda-
Oh, motion to bring a new item for the SRC to the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, now you can talk about it.
You want me to, or you want Donna to?
You can, you can introduce, but maybe we'll bring Donna's here, so we may bring you up to say hello as well and give us more info.
The motion is to author the acceptance of the following five school readiness grants for the award period of July first, two thousand twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Priority grant for two point nine, two million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars priority to the CDC Infant and Tyler Expansion Grant for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Priority Quality Enhancement Grant for eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six. Priority COLA Grant for one hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. And a priority enrollment-based grant for three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents related to the application, funding, and implementation of the said grants, and to refer the matter to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Great, and Donna, I'll invite you up anyway, since you came. I don't know if we have any questions here. The one thing I will add is that I know that it was a late item. I don't, we don't typically like to bring too many things late to the agenda under new business. Just missed the deadline, and it is time-sensitive, so I'll let you add anything else you'd like, Donna.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing it, first of all. The state only downloaded the grant, award letters the day late, so I appreciate the mayor and Erica allowing it. And because the programs that we fund get reimbursed after they have served their, their families, it's, it is time-sensitive. They're operating on a shoestring, so to be able to get them their funding as soon as possible, I appreciate it tonight.
Great. Do we have any questions for Donna? Hearing none, then. I will, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Donna, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. You've done a great job for all this, so.
All right, we are on to number nine, which is resignation. So Eric, I'm gonna ask you to read the resignations for us.
We have the following resignations. Laura Minor from the Mayor's Task Force on HIV and AIDS. John LaFreniere from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Todd Sturgeon from the Board of Education. Logan Williams from the Inland Wetlands Commission. And Mohammed Aziz was a section two-dash-nine resignation from the Diversity Council.
Great.
Motion to put resignations on file and have a letter of thanks sent to each of the participants.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we move on to appointments, and we have quite a few appointments this month. First is the Bristol Burlington Health, Board of Health. We need to reappoint Shannon Mulls to a term that will expire on seven twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Library Board, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Diane Salmoraji, I think I said that right, Salmoraji, a term to expire on one twenty-five. Well, you're gonna be our motion, right? She's-
You'll be the first.
I need a motion.
You want me to make the motion?
Yep.
To appoint Diane Salmoraji to the Library Board?
Perfect.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, on the Planning Commission, we have two reappointments, so we'll do these together. We're gonna reappoint John Soares, that term expires on seven twenty-eight, and then we're also gonna reappoint Kenneth Rasmussen-Teller, that term also expires on seven twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Second. We have one of them here, too, so make sure that we have any nice comments? No? All those in favor? Yes, thank you.
I've heard you've been doing a great job, sitting on planning as long as I did. I've heard you've been right up-
We don't always have people here that are getting appointed, so it's nice. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. And then also on Planning Commission, we are going to appoint Chris O'Donnell as an alternate, alternate member to replace Chris Nardi, who was accelerated up to the regular board, and that term will expire on seven twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Retirement Board, let me just look through this to make sure, I think, yeah, we can do all of these together, so let me read them. We need to reappoint Craig Vibert, his term expires on seven twenty-eight, and he represents Union thirteen thirty-eight. We're also gonna reappoint Dave Buckus to a term that expires on seven twenty-eight. He represents the Firefighters Union. And we are gonna reappoint Peter Dauphinay to a term that expires on seven twenty-eight. He represents the Police Union. And finally, reappoint William Veets, who's a citizen-at-large, term that expires on seven twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Transportation, we are going to appoint David Rooks, who will replace Andrew Collins as a regular member. That term is gonna expire on one twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, Zoning Board of Appeals, we have two, and I'll do these together because they're both the same. So we are going to reappoint Richard Balsam, a term that expires seven twenty-six, and reappoint David Percevich, a term that expires seven twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. And then I don't think we need a motion on this one, right, Erica? I'm just gonna appoint Eric Rosengren as the council liaison to the newly-formed Fair Rent Commission. So that's just an announcement to make sure that everybody knows. There's no voting on that one, Major. All right, that went quicker than expected, which is good. I didn't miss any, right, Erica? Very good. Number eleven is to approve change orders for Damato Downs, the joint venture, which is totaling seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents for the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School.
Move approval.
Second.
And I don't think anybody here to speak on this one specifically, but this is kind of the ending up of a lot of the last legwork that was done there, and I know I read through all of the materials myself, but I can't really answer any questions, but are we all good?
Yeah.
Good? All those that approve signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve, to award contract two P two-four-dash-zero-zero-three, professional services, enhanced commissioning services for New Firehouse Three, to Van Zelm, Haywood, and Shadford.
So moved.
Second.
Sebastian already kind of gave us an update on this one, which is good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen, to amend contract two P two-one-zero-three-one-B with Damato Downs joint venture in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. I know Ray is here, too. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this one? City Hall AV stuff, good. All those in favor?
Aye.